Welcome to the August 15th meeting of the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and online. Commissioners, planning department staff, and members of the public are attending in the Wheat Ridge City Hall and also by way of the Zoom platform. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make a comment may participate virtually by joining through Zoom either on a device or by calling in. A Zoom meeting link and dial-in information can be found on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. In addition to being online via Zoom, we are also broadcasting this meeting on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. Public comment will occur at the beginning of the meeting. This is, we do not have any changes to vote on tonight. This is a study session. But the public will be able to speak for three minutes. You may speak on any topic, or you may speak on the Lutheran Legacy Campus. If you plan to speak online tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting, and we hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. May I please get a roll call of the members?
Jonathan Shelkey.
Here.
Krista Hollab.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Danielle Gravy.
Here.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Michael Moore.
Here.
Sierra Mike Kionas.
Here. The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approving the order of our agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Next, we'll approve the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? I have one change on the very last page under Commissioner Updates on the first line. It should be First Friday. It just says first, so that, just for clarification. Is there any other corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? From August 1st.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Motion approved, eight to zero. Sorry, motion approved, seven to zero with one abstaining.
We'll now open the general interest public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject appearing on the agenda or not on the agenda for tonight. If you plan to speak on an item that is on the agenda, please, um, please limit your comments to three minutes. Those who wish to comment on our Zoom connection use the Raise Your Hand button. If you are dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute your phone. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Is there anyone from the public online? All right. Thank you. I will close the public forum. And the first item on our agenda then would be new business, and that would be the Lutheran Legacy Campus. May I have a presentation from staff?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Tonight, Scott Cutler, Senior Planner, and I, Jana Easley, Planning Manager, are going to go over the Lutheran Legacy Campus zoning framework as well as the charter amendment that will be proposed in the fall. And so, to start off, we know that we gave you a lot to preview and digest in the packet. And so tonight, we're going to keep our presentation pretty high level and focus more on the big takeaways. I'm going to share where we're at in the process and how we're translating the master plan to the zoning regulations, and give an update on the potential ballot question to modify the charter related to the building height of the campus. And then, following my short presentation, Scott will hit on some of the key topics for tonight. And then, following the presentation, we'll open it up for discussion and questions. I need to click the slide. All right. So, under the recent history, we'll just, we'll give you an abbreviated history for the purposes of tonight. And if our viewing audience is new to the project, we have more background on whatsupwheatridge.com. A full history of the events related to the Lutheran Legacy Campus is provided in the staff memo, including city council action and public engagement. So as a reminder, our planning work on the Lutheran Legacy Campus dates back almost four years, and the city has a history of being proactive about this important property. In 2020, we asked the hospital not to sell the campus until we had a chance to make a community-created plan. And so that public planning process took place in 2021, and council adopted the master plan that year. Fast forward to this year, and the Legacy Campus is back on our front burner for a couple of reasons. The hospital ownership decided that they were ready to sell the property, and the hospital moved on August 3rd. In a study session in April, we discussed the pros and cons of the city taking a proactive approach on both a charter amendment and a zone change, both of which are required to convert the master plan vision into reality. You can see here are three reasons why we're moving forward with a city-initiated zone change at this stage. First, this approach allows for a very public conversation. It's allowed us to talk about the Legacy Campus at several public events through the spring and summer, and to have this study session tonight. We could not have those conversations if we were reviewing this in a developer-led proposal because it would be quasi-judicial. Second, no one knows this master plan better than this community, this council, this Planning Commission, and our staff. Instead of waiting for a developer to interpret the plan, we are best able to align the zoning regulations with the community's vision, and we hope that you recognized that alignment in the documents that you reviewed tonight. Third, we're concerned about, now that the hospital is moved, that the campus could sit underutilized for some period of time. This campus is too central and too important to sit vacant and wait for investment and potentially become an eyesore or attractive nuisance. A proactive rezoning may help to shorten that period of time. It could be a matter of months and years instead of years and decades, such as with Clear Creek Crossing. So to that end, we wanted to share with you tonight how we're translating the master plan into zoning regulations. Lastly, we know that implementation of the master plan's vision requires the city charter to be amended to modify the building height limitations in the interior of the campus to maintain economic feasibility of development. On August 5th, city council gave consensus to proceed with a ballot question modifying the building height requirements for the campus, which will be discussed later in this presentation. Okay, so what's playing out between the Legacy Campus is really the textbook relationship between planning and zoning. The community has articulated a vision of the future which council has adopted. Zoning is the set of rules that explains what you can do with a property and what it can look like, and we are here at this point. We are actively translating that vision into zoning regulations, and those rules will then result in the built environment we originally envisioned with the Legacy Campus plan. The city is not buying the campus, so it will also take time and money and a new property owner. But in theory, this is a fairly linear process, and we should be able to connect the dots. Between the community's vision and the buildings and open space, we will see constructed over the next five to 10 years. Let's talk about trade-offs. The master plan describes key expectations which represent the central trade-off associated with future development. Number one, protect the perimeter. In a minute, Scott's going to describe the rules that we're proposing to this end. Number two, integrate existing assets. We've proposed zoning regulations related to the chapel, the Blue House, and even the existing tree canopy. And then, number three, we can afford more flexibility in the middle of the site in terms of use and height. In other words, if we push buildings in and up, we can achieve those lower densities and the open space amenities that the community wants to see on the edges. This expectation helps to inform the charter amendment question. So, as some of you may know, the current hospital is 91 feet tall. You also should know that the city charter limits structures to 35 feet for residential and 50 feet for commercial or non-residential. So fundamentally, the master plan calls for heights to be tapered taller in the middle so that they can be shorter at the edges. A ballot question and charter amendment will need to be, will be needed to allow that. Based on the public polling from May and July and our additional outreach over the summer, we think that we need to be pretty specific if we amend the charter, not simply to exempt this area from the charter's height cap, but to tell people specifically what height would be allowed. Throughout the summer, we've talked about the maximum height being less than that of the hospital. On August 5th, city council gave consensus to proceed with a ballot question limiting development in the middle of the campus to five stories, which would equate to approximately 70 feet. And this consensus was based on a more informed discussion about height and results from the second round of public polling and feedback from potential buyers of the property. Limiting five stories not only had more public support, but it also is the maximum height the most potential developers would ever plan to build. Buildings past five stories make little economic sense in Wheat Ridge for a few reasons. So the important takeaways for today is that the zoning will require heights to be tapered, like you see in this image, taller in the middle and shorter as you go outside of the wishbone and toward the edges. The zoning will match the charter question and allow five stories or 70 feet in the middle of the campus with a lower height around the perimeter of the campus, down from our existing allowed 35 feet, which would be the equivalent of three stories, to 30 feet and limiting the height of residential around the perimeter to two and a half stories. This will be more in line with the adjacent neighborhoods, which was one of the key concepts in the master plan. So, at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Scott, and he is going to talk a little bit more in detail about some of the zoning framework that we're looking at. Thanks.
Thanks, Jana. So, the master plan calls for buffer and transitions between the campus and the existing adjacent neighborhoods. And in order to ensure that that perimeter really is a buffer and a transition zone, we're instituting what's called a low-density overlay, which would be around the perimeter of the site adjacent to the existing low-density neighborhood. So that includes Dudley Street, and then the east side as well. It would apply to the first row of development within the campus and will ensure compatibility of land uses and form. Although the city code currently would allow a 35-foot height limit for residential, we're actually proposing a shorter height limit of two and a half stories and 30 feet within this overlay in order to be more compatible with existing conditions. The allowed uses within this low-density overlay would only be single-unit homes, duplexes, and open space, and that's consistent with what's in the master plan. This ensures that medium-density uses such as townhomes do not immediately border the existing neighborhoods, and that heights are lower. Lastly, this overlay would also require pitched roofs to ensure that large, flat-roofed buildings cannot be built in this area. The master plan and community feedback was also very clear about ensuring that the 38th Avenue frontage maintained buffers and setbacks from the low-density residential neighborhoods across the street to the north. Although this frontage is included within the proposed exempted area allowing up to five-story buildings, that does not mean that we want or are going to allow a wall of five-story buildings right behind the sidewalk on 38th Avenue. To make sure this doesn't happen, we're including additional setback and step-back requirements to ensure that the taller the building height, up to five stories, the larger the building setback would have to be. This will reduce visual impacts across 38th Avenue and ensure a five-story building is not built right up to the sidewalk. The existing hospital, even though it's seven stories and 91 feet tall, is setback significantly from the street, and new buildings would need to follow the same pattern. And so, just to look at the screen, it's probably a little hard to see. These are draft images, but, for example, the setback would have to equal the height of the building. So if it was a five-story building, the setback from the sidewalk on 38th would also have to be approximately 60 to 70 feet. Someone could also do a step-back where you have the building a little bit closer to the street, and that portion is setback that height, and then the upper stories are stepped back further. Again, this will ensure that there's a buffer of open space along 38th Avenue, buildings aren't right on the street, and will prevent some of those concerns about icing or crowding that the plan discussed. So, open space. The master plan contained a lot of guidance on open space and landscaping, including providing a range of amenities throughout the campus. The zoning requirements will include a regional approach to open space, meaning that open space is aggregated throughout each zone, and a range of public amenities throughout will be required. This will include the requirement for public open space directly on Dudley Street with bicycle and pedestrian connections into the campus, such as a pocket park. Taking a regional approach also means looking at stormwater from a regional perspective, with enhanced design requirements integrating natural features instead of having each individual building construct a concrete water detention pond. Coordination will also be required with the Rocky Mountain Ditch Company, with the goal being to retain a trail alongside or adjacent to the ditch. Ultimately, the ditch company controls what happens within their easement, but we would like to see something, whether within the easement or just outside of it. Lastly, open space or parks and plazas will need to be dispersed throughout the site. And those are just some examples from the master plan. Existing assets. The master plan laid out a lot of requirements that can be more easily translated into zoning, but one of the topics where there wasn't actually as specific of direction was related to the existing assets in terms of direct requirements. One of those topics is related to the preservation of existing buildings identified as having historic value. Blue House, Chapel, and Tuberculous's tent were all identified through the master planning process, and council passed a resolution in 2022 requesting that a future buyer demonstrate a good-faith effort exploring meaningful preservation, rehabilitation, and/or reuse of the buildings. There's sustained community desire and support for preserving the buildings in some form, and honestly, the master plan may not have gone far enough in that aspect. Because of this, staff will require that as part of the concept plan application, which is the first phase of development review, early in the development process, the developer must provide justification as to how they intend to comply with the intent of the master plan and the council resolution to preserve, rehabilitate, or reuse the buildings. An approval of that concept plan would then bind the developer to that commitment. Future site plan approvals would then need to show how the structures are being rehabbed or incorporated into new development. This is the city's way of ensuring that those assets are addressed in some way because currently they are not officially designated on local, state, or national historic registers. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jana to go over next steps, and there were a lot more details not covered in this presentation that were included in the staff memo, so at the end, feel free to ask about those details as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, so as far as next steps are concerned, Intermountain Health is currently reviewing offers from potential buyers for the site and will be selecting one soon, very soon. The purchase contract will likely be contingent upon the successful rezoning and charter amendment. City staff are currently drafting customized mixed-use regulations to reflect the vision of the master plan and ballot languages due to the county in early September. Council will decide on the final ballot language on August 26th. An official neighborhood meeting for the rezoning will be held on September 17th, along with, at the same time, the Let's Talk Open House at the Rec Center. And if the charter amendment passes in November, the mixed-use zoning regulations will be considered by you all, Planning Commission, in early December and by council in January. If those regulations are approved, the rezoning for the hospital campus will be heard by the Planning Commission and city council soon after. So that's all we have. Thank you, and Scott and I will now open it up for questions.
Let's start with Commissioner Gravy.
Okay. Couple, I just have a couple of notes that I made when reading through our packet. First of which is just some clarification on page two of our packet when it has kind of the first color-coded map, and it discusses this, and I forget which zone, I guess it would be part of Zone Four, but this light purple area, and it, and it, yeah, it says, not meant to be as dense as the darker purple areas, and so, I maybe that's described further on. I was trying to see if I got ahead of myself with that question, but my, my understanding was there's just kind of two. There's the low-density barrier, and then there's the purple area. So is there a different actual designation of height and size in that little light purple area?
Yes, there still would be. So the low-density overlay is just the first row of development, but each zone, if you go to the next page, there's zones one, two, three, and four, would actually have different permitted uses within each zone. And so, we anticipate the use is allowed within Zone Four outside of the low-density overlay to still be less intensive than within Zones Two and Three. So for example, that, that zone's probably not appropriate for commercial, and we haven't looked specifically at, at height or density in that area as much, but likely less intensive, just given its location and being outside of the, the central core of the campus.
Right. Are there, have there been any more in-depth conversations about any potential transit connections within the site, or is that all going to be? I mean, I know that there's bike and pedestrian considerations, and it's probably unlikely at this time that there would be any understanding of any transit connections, but has there been anything else in terms of the design that would allow transit to go through there?
I think a lot of that will depend on throughout the process. We, we always work with RTD on all of these. I think there's bus stop, but as far as bringing visitors into the site, I think it might determine, you know, might be determined on the basis of what type of development is in there. For example, I worked on a project up in Lafayette where we worked with RTD up there to bring, because of the type of housing, it was, it was a pretty dense, not super-dense, but pretty dense, like medium-density or so, development that was affordable housing, and it had some senior affordable and stuff like that. And so they had a couple different of bus routes that were coming through there, but it really didn't play out until we knew exactly what type of development is going to be in there because they want to, you know, their goal is to increase ridership, not to send a bus through that's not going to have riders on it. And so, that'll be part of our process as we work through probably the concept plan.
Yeah, I don't think we want to rule anything out at this point. RTD, you know, we, RTD just committed to bus service at Clear Creek Crossing, and that project has been six-plus years in the making. So sometimes it kind of takes something to actually get built before they commit additional service or access onto the site.
Yeah, because I was thinking of that in the same vein as there was mention here briefly of briefly of whether it will become a throughway for traffic, and I, you know, I imagine those two desires could conflict if you allow transit through, but I know that there's consideration to try to prevent too much traffic used to connect 32nd and 38th. So I don't know if you want to speak to whether that is just as the roads that we see as they're designed, if that's what would prevent that from happening, or if there's other steps, traffic calming or something that would potentially be put in place.
I think ultimately, we'd be looking at this for a walkable community, right? I mean, if it's going to have a lot of residential and some neighborhood retail or restaurants or something like that in there. But, but, but it's also important to, the bus fits into that at Clear Creek Crossing, too. We're working on a Paseo design, you know, the developer is, and there will still be bus and traffic probably coming through there, but slowing it down, yeah, we've got a lot of, a lot of ways that we can help facilitate that, I think. And if you're looking for a walkable community, I think those things go hand-in-hand. So, we of course don't know, I mean, if I had a crystal ball, I'd love it, but at this point, I would say that based upon what we've heard, for interest in the site, it would probably be a more, more walkable area, which would, in and of itself, discourage
Yeah.
a lot of cut-through traffic, because, you know, naturally, you slow down when there's more people around.
Absolutely. Do you know, has there been any indication that, has Intermountain Health expressed in alignment with these overall principles, or is that not, I mean, because they're choosing the developer, or they're choosing the sale, the buyer? And so just out of curiosity, have they, has there been any, have they weighed in on the process at all, or is that?
They, they have a commercial broker helping them through the process. I'm not sure how involved they are, couldn't speak on that.
The last question I had was just out of curiosity, and I, you know, I really, actually really appreciate the way that it's panned out in terms of recognizing the community input and setting those 30-foot, and, you know, the five-story cap, the 70-foot, because I know that we had, or you had indicated back when, when we had initially talked about this, how it would be, you know, more likely to be closer to the hospital height, but the fact that it's lower, I think will be, probably make it more agreeable to certain community members who are hesitant about development. But I am curious, because when you said that the, maybe it's just for this site specifically, but that there's less development interest in building something over five stories, then at the same time, we had a meeting a few weeks ago where at Ward Transit, they're building six- or eight-story buildings, and so, you know, clearly there are higher, taller buildings being built in Wheat Ridge when the exemption is in place. So just curious why those are different.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. You know, we don't know exactly what that developer is going to do. We have several apartment buildings in exempted areas that could go higher than five stories and haven't, because after five stories, construction types change, and it becomes substantially more expensive to build a building over five stories until you get to like nine or 10, and then the economics make sense again. So when you allow that kind of middle, it's unlikely that someone would want to proceed with that unless there was a, I don't know, major commercial component, or funding is just not that realistic, I think. We haven't seen anything over five stories in Wheat Ridge.
Oh, really? So the Ward Street area that we approved that zoning change, weren't their buildings at six stories right now, and then there was one that potentially was going to be eight? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, so the zoning would allow six stories or eight stories there, but that doesn't necessarily mean they would build it. The other property at that site that is zoned for eight stories only built at five.
Oh, so the existing buildings at Ward Transit are only five?
Correct.
Oh, okay. I thought they were six. Okay, thanks.
And for reference, I believe they're 64 feet tall, so.
Commissioner Kinnonis?
Good evening. I have a couple of questions right here on my phone. I think you addressed one of them in that it seems that once we, once we're good with the rezoning, it's really up to the developer to determine whether it's going to be mixed-use or not within the high-density area, correct?
Yeah, so are you talking specifically like the central?
Correct.
Zones Two and Three?
Yeah.
Yes, so we want to make sure that those uses are allowed, like having the potential for civic use or commercial. We don't want to prescribe a specific number or square footage to that type of use, but require that there is something besides residential included in both those zones.
Oh, so that can actually be required without getting specific into, with what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we could just say, you know, they have to provide commercial, civic, or something. We haven't gotten into the fine-grained details yet, but yeah, we could require that it's not just residential. They could have to provide, I don't know, a kiosk use for a commercial or retail space, civic space, things like that.
Yeah, and we don't want to prescribe a hard number, because that's when you're really just making people try to do something that they don't think is feasible or really isn't feasible. So, you know, if that number's 10% or 5% or something like that, whatever, whatever works out for the best design overall and uses that are correlative. So if, if a large chunk becomes a civic center, for example, maybe that would lend itself to more restaurant space nearby, you know? So it's sort of a trade-off.
Thank you. The other question I had, which I, I didn't, I wasn't very clear on, and I know that you tried to address this, on the multimodal, which is the, what areas, what zone, it's a light purple one. So is that going to be available for mixed-use as well?
I don't know if we've gotten that far. That's what the plan says, but we know that it's less intensive than the center part of the campus. So that's the area where it said, you know, maybe less dense or less intensive commercial development. Maybe that's, a restaurant probably wouldn't be appropriate in that area, for example, because that's kind of a higher traffic use. I don't think we've gotten as far as to decide what exact list of uses are in each zone, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we're looking at the overall site as the mix of uses. And, yeah, you're probably not going to have some retail that nobody's going to ever find, but you might have some office space or something like that in that area.
Perfect. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Kearns?
My question revolves around the hospital. Is the hospital's height grandfathered in? Do we get to keep it at 90 feet? Plans to demolish the hospital, or would the hospital be a candidate for adaptive reuse?
We're not sure yet. The, yes, it is grandfathered in. The hospital has been there longer than we've been incorporated, so it's just naturally grandfathered in. It can remain, and we don't know how the site will work out for adaptive reuse. It may be that some of the newer towers are successfully reused, but it's a, it's a somewhat difficult building because of the systems and mechanical and that sort of thing in place for reuse, so that will be something that'll be investigated.
Commissioner Schalke?
Yeah, I have a question on page nine, in that first paragraph under parking requirements. So it says about reducing vehicle trips by creating a comfortable walking slash biking environment. What does that mean?
I think the intent there is we want to have a street network and a network of paths within the development, where you don't necessarily, if you're on foot or on a bike, have to mix with vehicles. So kind of creating a separate pedestrian network, and if people live on the campus, that they could be able to comfortably walk to any civic or potential commercial uses within, within or outside as well.
Okay. Then the next paragraph talks about if a study indicates that infrastructure improvements are required, the developer will be responsible for constructing those improvements. Could that include something like protected bike lanes on the roads that go through?
I think it's kind of open to anything. City right-of-way, you know, 38th Avenue, 32nd Avenue, that's probably more of a challenge, but it's more of a blank slate within the campus in terms of how they want to address that requirement.
There's two roads basically through, right?
Correct.
Through the campus. So that would be a possibility, that they would look at that in order to have, as I say, a comfortable walking and biking environment, that that could be part of it, maybe protected bike lanes, which would be a first for Wheat Ridge.
Well, and interestingly, those internal streets are private, so they would be a part of the purchase, essentially.
So it would go back to the developer, then?
It would, but that's why we are proactively working on a framework for the zoning that would include these things that we would like to see, that the community wanted to see in that legacy plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Hollen?
Thank you. So just to put a really fine point on this, light purple area, is the next step up then up to 35 feet regardless of what it's zoned as? Is that sort of the next step from 30 to 35, or?
Yes, so there would actually kind of be three different heights allowed on the campus. There's the low-density overlay, which would actually be dropped to 30 feet or two and a half, then kind of the rest of the yellow portions on the map would be that 35-foot, and then the 50 would be the purple areas, including the light purple. But like I said earlier, that white purple is probably still going to be less intensive in terms of the allowed building forms, so maybe smaller buildings and less intensive commercial uses.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful, just to have a number. On page 10, we talk about open space. Just a few questions here. Would this open space then be private since the entire development is private, or would that be public open space?
So there is probably going to be a mix of both. You know, if you have a house, it'll have its own private backyard, same with maybe an apartment building might have its own private roof area or something like that. But the intent is that a lot of this open space will be publicly accessible and required. I know in some developments, we have required public access easements across these so that they are continually maintained by the whatever property association, and kind of continue to be public assets in the long run. That's how we're operating at Clear Creek Crossing, where, for example, the trailhead structure that's being built there is put in a tract that's a publicly owned tract by the metro district that will be maintained in perpetuity as a parkland. So it will be a mix of both, but I think the intent is a lot of it is going to be this kind of public trail network.
Great, for connectivity. And on the last bullet, under that first key concepts, the EG says detention. I'm not familiar with what open space detention is.
Oh, yeah, stormwater, yes.
Okay, perfect. There is not preservation included in there? Was that considered and rejected, or just never considered, given the development site?
What type of preservation are you asking about?
Like, not just open space, but like environmental preservation, so like wild, you know, like Wild Prairie, for example?
Well, I don't think, is there any Wild Prairie on it now? I'm not sure that there is, but there are, there is an existing tree canopy, and that's one thing that we're going to strongly encourage be preserved as practicable. Sometimes you cannot preserve all of it. We also are trying to preserve some sort of a trail system along the ditch, but that's going to involve conversations with the ditch company. A lot of times when you work with ditch companies, they want you to underground it, and they want you to remove all the trees within their easement, which is, what, 30 feet on either side of the ditch? So they can be easy to work with, medium to work with, or really, really difficult to work with. So far, I don't think that our ditch companies have been extremely difficult to work with, so I think that there's some opportunity here. But as far as, you know, we don't have the rights to say exactly what's kept within a ditch easement, for example, so we'll do our best.
Okay. Are there any regulations on, like, the subdivision of this entire area? Like, let's say if the developer they choose wants to then subdivide it and sell it off in pieces?
Yeah, I can talk through that a little bit. So before that could occur, we would still require if one developer, because one developer's going to buy the property to start with. They would be required to go through the concept plan process first before they could subdivide, and the concept plan is what dictates a lot of the circulation network concepts, the open space concepts, that requirement I talked about for the historic preservation, and that kind of, that's binding. So, you know, once that occurs, a future developer could then potentially portion, purchase a portion of the property, but they would have to develop that under the approved concept plan and under the approved zoning. So the concept plan is really that first step that they would be required to go through before it can get parceled off and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you for that. And does this preclude a developer from, in the future, petitioning for zoning changes? Like, they would, if it wasn't?
They're always entitled to ask.
Okay.
But it would not be in line with the legacy master plan. It most likely will not be in line with the comprehensive plan. So that would be a very hard uphill battle that probably would not be successful.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Well, the problem going sixth is that three out of, three of my questions have already been covered, so thank you, everybody else. Wanted to just get clarity on setback. You had mentioned equal to or greater than the height of the building?
Yes, and that would be specific to 38th, because we know that that portion is technically within the exempted area, but we still understand that the plan and residents that we've heard from don't want five-story buildings right on the edge of 38th Avenue. So this is kind of an extra step that we're going beyond just saying, oh, you can build five stories there, it's an extra level of protection.
Okay. And then setbacks for the outer perimeter, that you had mentioned that those may be a bit larger than they are regularly?
Yeah, so believe it or not, rear setbacks in Wheat Ridge are generally five feet, and we know that Allison Court is a bit lower than the campus on the east side, so we're discussing, we haven't landed on a number of larger rear setbacks for that portion, and then kind of along Dudley Street, making sure that those homes have some front yard, so again, buildings aren't right on the street.
Thank you. And then the last one I had was metro districts. Are there restrictions? Help me understand that.
No, no, there's no, Wheat Ridge has other metro districts. Clear Creek Crossing is a good example of that. Metro districts work really well with residential projects, because it becomes more of an HOA. They're a little bit more difficult with commercial projects, but, so in a case like this, where maybe they need to upsize the infrastructure, like the water and sewer lines or something for the, of course, the hospital is pretty big and they use a lot of water and sewer, I'm sure, but if they were needing to upsize those or replace them, build extra roads, things like that, that would be something that they could use a metro district for rather successfully, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bob. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, I think, Madam Chair. And I might be drilling down a little bit too deep than what you're presenting tonight, and Madam Chair, if I'm taking some of your thunder, kick me under the table. I have a couple of questions, like Zones One and Four, primarily single-family residential. Are there lot sizes with this yet, or is this depending on how they replat everything? And specifically, is it going to be, are we going to have like a little sub-road that goes between the main Lutheran Parkway or whatever, and whatever's on the east side? And whatever's on the east side, like Allison or whatever's on the, on the west side? Because it looks like those are going to be like, if, if we're only having one set of lots, it looks like they're going to be way deep or something. Do you follow me?
Yeah, I don't know if we've gotten that detailed yet. We, that, that low density overlay would be only single unit homes and duplexes and limited to that two and a half stories. And also on Dudley specifically, there's a requirement for park. So those kind of act as buffers. We haven't gotten as specific as lot sizes yet. The overall campus is still limited to twenty-one dwelling units per acre. So when you factor in open space and also the potential for larger apartment buildings in the middle, those start to take away from the allowed density or number of units elsewhere. So, no, we have not gotten that specific, but, um, it's not intended to be like extraordinarily narrow homes, for example, or, um, again, right on the sidewalk, there would still have to be front yards, things like that. Yeah, not sure about anything specific on.
So he says twenty-one lots per acre?
Dwelling units per acre.
Dwelling units per acre.
And that's across the entire campus?
Okay.
Because that's what's allowed now.
If it's residential or whatever in one and four, it's still twenty-one units per acre?
Per acre, yeah, net, yeah. So take the entire number of dwelling units divided by the total size and that's the density we're looking at.
Okay. Next question, and again, it might be too deep. What is the difference between zone three and four? I mean, we kind of had, I mean, zone one is primarily residential. Zone four, you have residential and then a little bit higher soft purple in the middle there. And then it looks like three and four are kind of the same. So I guess the crazy question would be, will I have a zone three and a zone four if they're going to be the same?
I, I think you might mean two and three, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, two and three, I'm sorry, I misspoke, you are correct.
I, I think they are really similar. I think the biggest thing is the setback from Thirty-Eighth that affects zone two is a pretty big change, whereas zone three you can kind of, you don't have to deal with Thirty-Eighth Avenue. We haven't gotten as specific on uses yet, so, you know, maybe ultimately they become combined, but there are definitely some suitabilities that were different between two and three in the master plan. Thanks, Jana, for pulling that up.
Yeah, and if you haven't read or at least skimmed through this master plan, if you look at page sixty-four in it, you might, there's some other pages around it that talk about the different levels of density. So this should provide some level of comfort because this is what we're aiming for. We're not trying to go against what the master plan is saying. We're trying to solidify what the master plan is saying. And so there are examples of, for example, middle density. And it, and it shows there's transition areas. And this is what we talked about when we talked about the tapering of heights. So as they, as the center where the hospital is, is the tallest piece, it's going to taper down. We don't know exactly what that taper is going to look like. There might be parts of the building that are five and parts that are three around the edges. But the intent of this, of, of what we are doing right now is really to, like I said, solidify what is in the plan. On the higher density, it shows this, whoops, it shows me because I just pressed the wrong button. Hold on one second. I lost it. I will, I will find it again, but if you haven't looked at it, I mean, it, it's a long document, so I understand if you haven't read it. But if you get to the pictures at least and look through it, it does talk about transition zones and, you know, that taller in the middle and bleeding out toward the edges. And we're even going a little bit further in lowering the height around the, the perimeter to the two and a half stories because technically those homes around the, the, the perimeter that are existing, that are already built, could pop their top and build up to thirty-five feet right now. But in order to help kind of the whole neighborhood feel a little bit more comfortable and also, um, have the existing transition a little bit more in line with what's there, that two and a half story is really, it provides for a good-looking home that has hopefully enough room for, you know, a growing family.
Thanks, Jana. One last thing, and it, and I think Commissioner Hollis, we tried to answer for her and, and just to clarify, how much open space are, are you, is, is this going to have? And when you say open space, I'm thinking like Crown Hill, you know, wild, if you will? Or is this going to be more of a controlled park-ish kind of a atmosphere?
I have, we haven't gotten that prescriptive yet. We know the plan calls for a lot, but we also know that it calls for open space interspersed throughout, so not necessarily focusing on one massive green space, but rather multiple pocket parts, multiple types of open space. Some could be more natural, perhaps along the ditch. Some might be more like a, a plaza or a square that is somewhat hardscape. So I think there's a, a big mix. The master plan did not get that prescriptive on ten percent has to be open space or twenty percent or whatever. It really just talked about providing amenities throughout and that's something that we could ensure that each zone has either a minimum percentage or has its own park or, or amenities space within the zone. So we still have a lot of work to do. This is just a high-level framework at this point.
I was afraid I was drilling down a little bit, but that's what we get drilled down to. So, thank you very much.
So my question, um, Will and I are the only two that were here when we adopted this plan. And my understanding from all of the discussions and work with CZB was, did they do this or did, who did their master plan? Who would, okay. Two was going to contain, zone two was going to contain the higher, at the time, apartments. And zone three was going to be, um, mixed-use, like townhomes, more dense. And four, under my understanding, was going to be more like civic. Maybe the city would move their offices and the police station there is what I had heard. And then in the past month, I've had three residents come to me with their hair on fire because they think that this is all going to be five-story or higher apartment buildings and that the developer is going to do whatever they want. Which I tried to explain, no, they can't because there's a plan and it will be zoned to the plan. But as I read what was on, uh, published on, uh, WhatsApp Wheat Ridge about this and looking at this, it seems to me, and I don't know if this is the right term, there's been a little bit of scope creep in that now two and three could house five-story apartment buildings. And the, uh, opportunity for people to buy an affordable home such as a townhome has been diminished because the numbers aren't coming out right and then we have to have five-story apartment buildings in here. And so I just need to know how to be able, because I stepped in it on Facebook because I said, no, the only high building is going to be where the hospital is. And I was wrong because it's changed. So can we have some clarification about that, please?
I don't think it's changed. I, I appreciate that, that input because, like I said, this is a long plan. And I think that the, the final map that's shown in the purple and light purple is a, is a culmination of all of these other kind of heat maps, if you can see that. It's kind of the heat maps that are put together in the middle of the legacy master plan document. And so in this area, it talks about middle, middle density and it shows some pictures of some, I would guess, thirty-five-foot tall townhomes. And then, and then the page before, a couple of pages before that, it shows, hold on, I'm very slow because this is, my program isn't, my window's in the way. Um, on the page before that, it shows some of those taller examples where you've got the four and five-story. I think that this is something that's going to probably have to get worked out in the, um, concept plan. That's the appropriate stage to work this out. It's, we're not trying to have scope creep, I like that term though, that's very good. But what we are trying to do is, is allow for that mix of housing types, adhere to the plan in the low density and even shorten it a little bit around the perimeter. And in the, in the center, um, where both the dark purple and light purple, I really do believe that's a culmination of the, um, because some of it talks about civic, some of these heat maps, I'll call them, they talk about civic, some talk about office. And so you, I suppose you could have something like a, uh, four-story building in that area. It, there, there needs to be, for it to be mixed-use, there needs to be a mix of uses. And I think this is going to have to come up as part of the concept plan, but our goal is to set a zoning framework so that we have the basics to work off of, so that there are no surprises. It's predictable for both us and the developer and faster so the site doesn't get, sit there and get vandalized and such. And so, it, uh, do you guys have a copy of this in your packets? I can't remember if it was included, the whole master plan?
They don't, it was a hundred pages. No, it's available on, I, I, there's links to it in the staff report.
It's super long, but like it, it's got the civic, which we don't have any idea at this point if we can build a civic center there or if it would even be feasible. We've talked about perhaps adaptive reuse of the hospital buildings or portion of them, but the systems and mechanical in there are just massive. And so we are currently, um, looking for a, I, I think, I think we have one selected, but I'm not sure. We've got a, uh, architectural consultant essentially that's going to help us with, um, the feasibility study with regard to expansion as far as a mixed, uh, an adaptive reuse into the existing hospital or a new building on that site or if it's, you know, would be better to expand City Hall somehow. We've got no solid answer on that at this point because we just don't have enough information. But they did provide in this that civic uses and that kind of bled over the whole thing in the wishbone and outside the wishbone. The middle density kind of bleeds along the edges of the wishbone. Um, and I think that that was intentional for the simple reason it's kind of that step down along the streets. Typically, it's, unless it's designed really well, it's uncomfortable to walk next to a five-story building. A lot of these concepts are going to have to come out in, in the concept plan process. I'm trying to see if there are any other overlays. They have the parks and space overlay, so that would be good to look at. But again, you know, even if you look at the parks and open space overlay, it's, it's great. It's, it's a lot of green, but it doesn't mean the whole thing's going to be a park, right? It's going to have areas of low density because it's a culmination of that other heat map, maybe another map, and then this map. And so it's trying to, to inform all of those into one map here. So I get, I get the, the concern, um, but with the concept plan, those are things that we can talk through. And in the code writing, we can encourage that mix of housing types. I mean, that's the purpose of a mixed-use district, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd add, um, you know, we, we don't know that much about civic, but that doesn't mean we're not going to say this use is allowed and, um, and even encouraged at these locations. Same with apartments, we know that there's some areas within zones two and three that are more appropriate for apartments. Same with townhomes. Thirty-five feet is actually still challenging to build a three-story townhome. So, you know, even within the area that's exempted or potentially exempted up to seventy feet, it's really hard to fit a, a standard three-story townhome even within thirty-five feet. So if they were able to go to thirty-seven feet, honestly, that does make a really big difference when you're talking about being able to access a full third floor. Yaro Gardens is an example of a thirty-five right at the line and their third floors are actually fairly small, um, floor to ceiling because that thirty-five doesn't actually really account for like a modern floor to ceiling height. But yeah, I think, I think Jana's right on about the heat maps. There are definitely areas that are more appropriate than others, but we don't want to get so prescriptive as to say an apartment can only be located on this corner because everyone's going to have a different vision for the property.
Yeah, I think that's, that's perfect. And once we, once, once a developer has submitted an offer and it gets into the real meat and potatoes of it, that's one of the first things that they'll want to do is sit down with us and talk about what does the zoning mean for us? And of course, if the charter amendment is not approved, that's also going to, we're going to have to go back to the drawing table and say, what can we do to not only implement the, the master plan, but also there, there has to be a feasibility trade-off for the master developer. I mean, I don't know what they're paying, but I'm sure it's going to be a pretty penny. And then there's demo, there's retrofitting, there's all sorts of other infrastructure issues. So it has to pencil out for them or they will walk away and we will end up with a vacant site. And that's, that's kind of the scary part of it. And so we, we would have to go back to the drawing board at that point and say, okay, what, what might be feasible, what might work, what might the community support? That's still in line with the master plan document.
So based on the surveys that you did this summer, the second one was a lot different than the first one. Did the temperature for passing the charter amendment change between the first and second try? Is it more favorable with now than it was in the beginning?
It is, we found that the more you know, the more you're likely to support the charter amendment. Because a lot of people didn't even know, it, when we started this process, I think it was fifteen percent or something of people didn't even know the hospital was moving. And so some, some don't, and so they got their signage up there hopefully by now. Wouldn't it be nice to be just turned off from all your electronics for a couple of weeks and not know? But, uh, as the survey went on, it kept saying, well, did you know this and did you know that? And I think that the more informed people were, the more likely they were to vote in support of it. Because, you know, when you go to the voting booths, you have to be informed. You don't want to just pick one and hope it works out. So we're, we're doing our very best to get the word out through the surveys, through the open houses, through, um, you know, just conversations within the community. And, um, so we'll see what happens. But yeah, it has been more favorable as the more you learn, the more you know and the more you feel like you can support it according to the surveys.
That's all my questions. Anybody else have a question come up during the com? Okay.
Just one quick one.
Commissioner Gravy?
On the, uh, just a curiosity, on page eleven, when you talk about, uh, the section, the section about permitted uses and requirements and it talks about the concepts of the master plan that are going to try to be incorporated, there's a mention, you know, eye-catching term about trying to have, allow retail, it doesn't cannibalize existing retail. And I guess I wasn't clear as to, I know that, you know, through this process, you can kind of allow retail and permit it in certain areas, but I didn't think that the city at, you know, in this kind of thing could have a, be able to determine which ki, what type of retail is going to be where retail is allowed. But that made me wonder if I was mistaken, if that question makes sense.
Um, I'm not sure you're mistaken. I, we don't get as specific as to say this type of retail is okay, this isn't for the most part. But what we didn't want and what was highlighted in the plan actually several times was there's a lot of existing investment on Thirty-Eighth Avenue at the corners, which is a relatively new development and then further east. What we don't want is to build a lot more retail and allow it everywhere on the site and then it sits vacant or it pulls people, there's only so much the market can bear in Wheat Ridge.
Yeah.
And we don't want to have those sites at vacant either. So we're just, I think the goal is to not allow retail everywhere, but still allow it and not get so prescriptive on the exact, you know, is this a bakery or is this an office or?
Yeah, so it's more just about how much retail and where it's allowed.
Exactly.
Okay, so I, I missed that a little bit. And then the other question I had, just to make sure I understand, when you talk about the significance of the concept plan, once we're at that phase, that, that's a purely staff process, right? Like there's not a public. Like there's not a public input process on the concept plan. Is that correct?
It ultimately is approved by our director, but there is a public process, including a neighborhood meeting requirement and neighborhood notification for that. Because we recognize if the zoning is approved and the charter's approved, it might be a couple of years before we see a concept plan. And so at the least, it's a courtesy to let people know, "Hey, there's finally going to be activity and this is what they're proposing." Ultimately, if it complies with the zoning, it will get approved, but there's still the opportunity and awareness as part of that neighborhood meeting.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Who else had a question? Commissioner Kearns?
Okay, quick one. So, okay. So we talk about tapering heights from Thirty-Eighth Ave with setbacks. Do heights also taper from the Rocky Mountain ditch? And if not, maybe they should.
They don't. There was nothing in the plan that suggested that would be necessary, but noted.
And I think, and I, I may be remembering this wrong, but I thought in this master plan, there was some language about heights being allowed to be taller next to the ditch. So I'd like to maybe dig a little bit deeper into that.
The ditch is the primary greenway through the site, so let's let more light in. Let's make it less of a canyon and more of a valley, urban, urban form-wise. So, and to do that with, let's taper the, if, if possible, just seems more inviting, I think.
No, these are all good recommendations. And, and even as we delve a little bit deeper into, I mean, we're really just kind of, you know, like we've said, we're talking about big issues at this point. But as we get a little bit deeper into the zoning framework, we're basing it on some of the, the existing mixed-use platforms, I will call them in our zoning code. But there may be some other things that we can look into to say, "This might be nice if it, it wasn't five stories right next to Lutheran Parkway," or, you know. There might be some additional things that we can look into, including along the ditch.
I guess one more small comment is, you've got Lutheran Parkway and Lutheran Parkway West. Perhaps we should change the name of one of those to avoid confusion.
It's, I mean, I agree, but I don't know. It might be up to the developer. And honestly, if the community feels strongly, they might tell us that, "Don't change the name." I don't know.
I vote for Starker Parkway.
You beat me to it. I was going to say Kearns because of that comment.
Yeah, Madam Chair, one more, and it seems to me that education, like you'd said, Jenna, is very important. Is there a way we can, I don't know what the right word is, manipulate the city website to have like a landing page for this, to, to get to the main or the, the master plan? Or maybe be, and be able to put like a link on the city's social media, Lutheran Master Plan is, not necessarily blasted, but occasionally have something come up because I think a lot of people don't understand what's happening and they're making assumptions that the city wants this and they're going to get their way by God and I don't have a voice.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's true in every city. And some folks, they're just always going to have that opinion. But I definitely think that we could probably get something out on social media. In fact, I think that we have a plan for that as part of our timeline of events. I think social was one of them. People can go to the What's Up, Wheat Ridge page right now. It's right up front and center and there's a link right there.
Very well.
To the plan.
You already did it, so never mind.
Really have, we've really tried to get the word out in every possible way that we can and.
Yeah, the attendance at the first meeting was great and the second meeting, we've gotten emails. We, I talked to someone that lives on Dudley Street that is excited about the requirement to actually have a park on Dudley. So we've, I mean, we've talked to hundreds of people at this point in the past couple of months.
And the ones you didn't talk to found their way to me, so.
Okay, and, and it's, and it's perfectly okay for, you know, tough questions, you can always send them to us too.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. That was great. Thank you, Scott. Next on our agenda is upcoming dates.
Okay, so our next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting is September fifth, and I don't think we have any items on that one.
No, that one's been canceled.
That one's been canceled. So then the following meeting after that would be September nineteenth.
And isn't there something happening on the seventeenth?
The seventeenth is the open house and the neighborhood meeting. And we've, we've actually got a pretty full week that week. There's also a steering committee meeting for city plan.
Are we allowed to go to the neighborhood meeting? Can the commissioners attend the neighborhood meeting?
Let us know if you plan on attending the neighborhood meeting. I think you'll probably maybe be at the let's talk, but I think I would want to.
I live in the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You'd be coming as a resident.
Okay.
I, I think that's fine, but I want to check with noticing, any specific noticing requirements that we might have to do if more than two of you attend. And please, I'm encouraging more than two of you to attend, that's fine. But, because that's also the let's talk open house with the city plan stuff. So, but when you get more than two of you, it becomes a meeting if you're in the same room together. So it would, yeah, it would, exactly. It would, it's the, it's the appearance of impropriety. Like if you see three of you talking together and even if you're talking about your kids and your dogs, you'd just never know. So it's two-by-twos is okay. More than that, we have to potentially post a notice, so. The open house and the neighborhood meeting. But the neighborhood meeting will most likely have a dedicated room to it at the rec center, probably the activity room. And that's where there could, I could see there being an accumulation of more than two of you in there potentially.
Are you talking about the city plan?
I'm talking about both. So we have, the, the, sorry, the, the zoning, the, the rezoning neighborhood meeting for the Lutheran site is going to be held at the same, the same night, but in a different location within the rec center.
Okay.
Yep, so.
That's on the seventeenth, like.
Yes, you can go to both and get, I think we have ice cream that night, so.
Oh, no.
The residents within a thousand feet will get notification of that meeting, so.
Just to clarify, then are we canceling the nineteenth or is that to be determined?
My preference, because of all the night meetings, would be to cancel the nineteenth. However, if we have a, a burning hot application, we may have to hold the meeting.
Okay, so open for now.
Yeah, it's open for now.
All right. And now we have project and development updates.
I don't think I have any further updates for today. The medical office building, which is called the MOB, that's moving along out there next to the hospital. We don't have a final expected CO date on that yet, but we'll let you know when that does. Anything else?
Yeah, the Outlook Phase Two apartments at Clear Creek Crossing and the Trailhead, which includes a nice statue slash wind chime thing, and the picnic shelter is opening later this fall. I believe they're going for final COs in September or October, so coming up pretty soon.
Any commissioner updates?
I, I don't have an update, but I just wanted to take a minute to thank staff for all their work on, on, on this and kind of the continued proactive, really thoughtful approach to these projects that are, have huge significance to the future of our community. And so I, I think it seems like we, we have some really talented staff, so I just wanted to express my appreciation for you all.
Yeah, I'd second that. Thanks for all of the preparation and work. I just want to give a shout-out to the people that did the Carnation Festival, the committee and everything. It was outstanding. During the parade, I was next to a, an older lady that was from Edgewater, and she had said this was her first one and it was the best parade she's been at in decades. So she was real excited about that. I liked it too. It was, you know, we had some marching bands for change and, you know, it's that old-timey feeling. And then over at Anderson Park, whoever picks the bands, "Oh my God, you did a great job." I can't think there was one that I didn't like. So kudos to the, the entire festival and everyone that put it on, and thanks to everybody that did.
I did have one more. Don't forget the Boards and Commissions barbecue. Boards, Boards and Commissions Appreciation barbecue on August twenty-eighth. This year it's going to be at Prospect Park. There's lots of shade, there's a large shelter there, lots of tables. We'll have, Roland Smoke is going to cater it. We'll have, I can't remember what the dessert is, might be ice cream also. We just have ice cream on the brain. And some games and, and other activities and live music. So hope to see you there, five-thirty to seven-thirty on the twenty-eighth of August. So that's a Wednesday.
Now, can the planning commission sit together or do we need to break up?
That will be notified. It'll be noticed, so you'll be fine.
All right.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty.
All right. May I have any other discussion before we conclude? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. We are adjourned.